I call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll have roll call, please.
From the Waller's?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes. Citizens comments, first of all, we have Ben Erickson is here.
There he is.
Oh, he just walked in, yeah. You're on, come on up, Ben, and approach the microphone, you can just tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, my name is Benjamin Erickson, and I just graduated this May from the university here in town with an degree in biology. I know that this summer I got hired by the Minnesota Green Corps, which is a subsidiary of the AmeriCorps program, to work here in Morris over the course of the next eleven months to help reduce chloride levels in the water and to also help reduce the energy consumption of buildings here in Morris. So I'm just hoping to give back to the city.
Cool.
Yeah, we didn't have to find a place for him because he already lived here. So it was kind of nice to have somebody that was here already, and he got all settled in. He actually got a crash course in all the Morris model stuff that we're working on with the German visit last week. You get a chance to go on a lot of that, and set up a spot for him in City Hall, and he's doing a really good job getting dialed in and starting to work on everything.
Well, great.
So we're lucky to have him.
You're welcome.
And I told him he didn't have to stay for the whole meeting if he didn't want to, so that'd be perfect.
Yeah. Thanks for being here, Ben, I'm sure that we'll see a lot more of you.
Yes, you will.
Okay, any other citizen comments that are not on the agenda?
Me.
Sid.
Okay, I don't usually come up and say anything, but today I thought it would be a cool idea because currently up at the university, the biomass plant is running this week. And so A, it smells like there's a bonfire in the distance, that's why. And B, I went down there to take pictures, and instead of burning wood chips, which are not as local to our area, they're actually burning corn cobs. And so I took a picture, and I'll walk around and show you all. But there are cobs from local farmers, I don't know who the contractor's with right now, heating the entire university campus by making biogas. So I thought that was kind of cool that last week the Germans were here. They're talking a lot about how they use biogas to heat their city and their community. And now we're doing it right now, at this very moment. And I also really like looking into the boiler through the fire tube, see all the fire. So I brought a cool picture, and I just wanted to let everybody know that we're heating University of Minnesota Morris with corn cobs right now. So that's pretty cool.
Cool.
To actually see fire. Who doesn't like looking at fire, right? Our corn cobs from our local farmers.
Cool.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
That's pretty hot.
Thanks, Sid, appreciate it.
That'll be on front page or Saturday's paper.
Well, it's cold, I'm gonna get, I hope they have plenty of corn cobs.
It's a big old pile, don't worry, we will not run out.
Great, thank you, Sid. Any other citizen comments? Okay.
Will there be a chance for comments when you get into the other section?
Absolutely, there'll be a public hearing for that, so absolutely, that would be the time to do that. Which we'll actually move into right now. We have a public hearing to talk about the establishment of a TIP district. Lane?
Yeah, so I provided you with a memo with my recommendation on it. We do have Nick Handhut from Ellers here, who's gonna actually lay out exactly what has to happen with the tax increment financing district. He'll answer any questions you might have on what the project is and how it works.
Okay, Nick, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, Nick Handhut, from Ellers and Associates. And I'm just gonna provide a broad overview of the intended project, as well as the TIP district and some of the considerations that can be formed, as well as the reason for this evening's agenda items. So first and foremost, tax increment is the ability to capture the future taxes related to a new development and then allocate those taxes towards financing either that development or some public infrastructure that's gonna support it, overcoming some kind of barrier to the financing of that project. And so in this case, the developer has approached the city to build additional housing units within the city of Morris, doesn't pencil out in whole, and is asking essentially for assistance in the form of this future tax increment to help finance that project. He's currently already under construction, completed with one phase of the development of four new units here in the city. And he anticipates on that property an additional forty units potentially that could be built as long as he gets his financing in order. Tonight, there's a public hearing component to establishing a new TIP district, receiving comments from the populace and the public, considerations as well from the county board and school district because it's part of their potential taxes that are being deferred, in creating a new TIP district. At completion of that public hearing, then the council and the EDA can take action to establish the district and then administer that district and that financing, how they're gonna use that resource going forward. And so tonight, there are two resolutions, one in front of the city council, one in front of the EDA, to take that step towards approving the district after the completion of the public hearing. And then there will be further steps, if the council so chooses to establish the district, to actually negotiate a contract with the developer to set the terms for what the developer needs to actually do to receive the assistance, and that will come before the EDA actually in a future meeting. So that's not actually on the agenda for this evening. Tonight is just the first step of actually establishing the district, creating the tool. And administering that tool will come later. When you establish the TIP district, you need to define the geography of that TIP district. So right now, it is a housing TIP district intended for occupancy in part at affordable levels. It is comprised of three parcels that are all under control of the developer today. It's just those three parcels that the future taxes providing this funding will be derived from. So it won't come from any other adjacent or any other property within the city of Morris. You also can establish the duration of the district. A housing district can be for as long as twenty-six years in maximum. It's up to the EDA in administering the district and the amount of assistance that you want to utilize to help develop the project, to actually set that, the life of that, whether or not you want to actually go out to twenty-six years or cut it short if possible. You also need to establish a budget for the district. And so in the packet information, as well as the TIP plan that's before the council, we have done a projection of the potential taxes that could be generated from the additional forty units on this development. Now, the initial forty units cannot be captured as tax increment because they were started before the proceedings of this evening. But then any other development going forward, if the council does establish this district, those additional forty units, the taxes from them can be captured within the TIP district and used for the financing. We've generated a budget over the full twenty-six years, anticipating potentially one point two million dollars in total generation over that entire term. Now, again, it's just a maximum budget based on that revenue projection. It's really up to the EDA in its future actions to decide how to actually allocate or spend that money. And so the proposed budget in front of you today is really just setting a maximum based on that statutory limitation. Other than that, there are no other background information necessary to establish the district, but we certainly do have the developer present to answer any of your questions. Again, it is a housing TIP district intended for occupancy in part by individuals at affordable income levels. And the maximum amount of duration is potentially twenty-six years if the council and EDA so choose. There are some milestones that you need to be aware of, you know, the development does need to occur within a five-year period once you do take action to certify the TIP district. So as you're administering the district going forward, you want to make sure in time that developer has indicated he does intend, if the financing does come into place, to build those forty units within that five-year timeframe. So that's not a, not a hurry under today's conditions, but something to keep an eye on in the future. Other than that, I'd be happy to address any of your questions, talk about how TIP works in this instance, or anything in general about my remarks. Thank you.
Okay, Nick, the county board and the school board, what do they, how do they play into this? They have to approve this also, correct?
They actually do not have to approve it, but part of the process, we did have to furnish this TIP plan document that's within your packet, we had to provide them a thirty-day notice of that document. So thirty days ago, the boards of both the school district and the county received a copy of it. They received a letter indicating that this public hearing is going to occur. Encouraged them to provide some comments, reach out to the city or myself. We did receive some initial comments from the county coordinator, but nothing from the board in general. The coordinator just made inquiry to me about some of the mechanics behind it and what the potential project was.
Right.
They don't have any formal say or action. It's really up to the discretion of the, ultimately, the city council to approve the formation of the TIP district.
Okay. How is this different than Heartland?
Heartland was a tax abatement, so on a tax abatement, then each, each organization has to approve their part of the abatement.
Okay.
So the city did theirs, the county did theirs, and the school district did theirs.
And is that just because of the name, tax abatement?
It's the law under which you're allowed to do that kind of financing versus this one. So I don't know if you can explain it?
The difference in financing?
It behaves identically if all three entities do come together and pool that for the same purpose. It would behave like a TIP district if an abatement were that way. But ultimately, the abatement by itself, it's intended for a much larger range of projects that it can assist because the theory behind it is each one of the entities is approving it on their own behalf. They have their own say in whether or not it moves forward. And so it's not as restricted into what types of projects you can use it for. Whereas in TIP circumstances, there are a very limited spectrum of projects that you can assist. One of them being affordable housing, others can be redeveloping a underutilized or contaminated site. And then there's some limited instances where you can actually use it for industrial and manufacturing type of development, but that's basically it. Abatement can be used in a wide array of public improvement type projects across the spectrum of infrastructure, community centers, recreational projects, streets, and also for housing and other things like that.
I think that was kind of the thought process behind that whole, going with the abatement on that area because it was very, because, you know, Harrison Morris was the first. And we really had no idea what was gonna happen after that, so.
Right.
Is the definition of the, of an abatement in the TIP and what it, what can it be used for? Is that something that the state does, the city does, the county does, or who determines that definition?
So the state legislature does, it's all defined in state statutes. So chapter four sixty-nine in general, both abatement and TIP are within there, but they have separate sections in the statute. And so the TIP section is much more broad and prescriptive. It has a lot more restrictions, as I mentioned, put in place. Abatement is a couple, four different passages. It's a therapy, it's a more limited type of tool that you can use for just general retail and commercial development where it doesn't qualify under TIP.
And in our state statute, it says TIP, you couldn't use it for redevelopment of your downtown area, or?
Circumstantially, you could, but you can't use it primarily if you're turning a greenfield site into a, you know, gas station or a restaurant or something like that. You know, it has to be for qualifying projects. As I mentioned, on the commercial side of things, it's generally manufacturing and industrial type projects that are providing sort of a big thing, high employment type of system or benefit to the community. But you can use it for redeveloping as long as you can demonstrate that the building is contaminated or needs significant amount of remediation that just, that the private marketplace can't overcome.
So we, as the city council, can determine this, and the school board and the county that basically have to rely on it and their taxes going to this, also the cities. They don't, they don't have a say, one way or the other, so.
Well, they have a, they have a saying that they certainly are respected members of the community, and they can voice their concerns to the council for this, and we have to give them adequate time to do so. We haven't received anything formally from them within that period. But ultimately, no, it does, it's at the discretion of the council whether or not to create the TIP district. And I should, I should add that, you know, the basis of the tool is that but for this assistance, the project would not happen anyway. So if the TIP district's not created, the assumption being that that assistance is necessary to actually build a project. And so, you know, I would say they're deferring taxes rather than actually actively allocating their taxes to the project because the project would not happen today because the assistance was not committed. And it's up to the city and the EDA to administer that over the district to make sure. And so we, we have done a review initially of the developer's pro forma, looked at the cost and rent structure that is being proposed, compared that to rents within the city itself. And there's a, there's a gap, if you will. The rents don't overcome the mortgage plus the upfront development costs of building new housing here in the city of Morris. Now, what that appropriate gap is and how you will negotiate that will be defined at a later date. As I mentioned, as you administer the district and enter into a contract with that developer. But at least for this stage in the game, you know, really you're setting the, setting the stage with creating the tool, undergoing the public process, taking comments from the public, as well as the boards of the school district and the county, putting all that into consideration and then deciding whether or not to create the district and then move forward, negotiating with the developer.
Just one more. So if tonight's is to establish the TIP district, and then we go forth and do, and to administer the TIP district, what at that point, they don't like the administration part of it, then it just all ends? Or, I mean, if we decide to administer it differently, if in that process it changes, can it change in that process? Or once it's established, that's what it is?
So I'll answer it in two parts, and I'll see if I get it, what you're saying, or your question. You know, it is at the EDA's discretion on how to administer this district moving forward. If you're not able to reach terms with the developer, then the project doesn't happen, or they're not gonna accept this assistance, they may scale down the project to a smaller amount of units. They may choose to abandon the project and not move forward, and that's certainly a risk, if you will. But until that contract is signed, I would advise you that you don't need to take the step of actually certifying the district with the state and starting this, this tool. You can create the district, create this mechanism, go through the public process, and then hold on to that certification until a date certain when you and the developer can reach terms. And then you actually file this TIP district with the state, which actually gets administered or overseen. TIP districts are overseen by the state auditor's office. So you'll end up certifying it with the county, the state, as well as the department of revenue. Everyone will have visibility on it. But you can hold on to that certification until your, or the EDA has reached terms with that developer and actually are certain if you want to utilize that specific amount.
That makes, that kind of leads to a question, if for some reason Mr. Timberman decides not to go forward, is that TIP district then open to other developers, or is it specific to his company?
So it is not specific to him until that contract is in place. That would be the time when you've actually reached terms and have a legal document that obligates spending this money. At this point in time, what we have done to date is draw a boundary around these three parcels, which Mr. Timberman does own. And I don't know if he would intend on selling them to a different developer, but the tool would be available, if you will, until that, until that contract is actually negotiated and signed.
For that, those parcels?
Yeah, we've established the district just for those three parcels. If you want to remove it or expand it, we have to go through another public hearing process to start all over.
Right, okay.
For today, it's just these three parcels right now.
The tax value on the three parcels currently, if we do nothing, any idea what that is?
So that's actually part of the way we calculate the TIP to come up with the budget in coming due. There's a detail of this in the back of the TIP plan that I want to show you. Right now, the value of the property, including the four units that are completed, right? The building that's completed brand new today is estimated at three hundred eighty-nine thousand. That's a tax capacity of four thousand five hundred sixty-one. And that will not be captured in the district. That is new tax, that, those four units, that's a new tax base for the city of Morris, as well as the school district and the county, that won't be captured going forward. If the developer does build out the additional forty units within the five-year timeframe that it is allowed, the expected value is two point nine million on that property. So not quite a tenfold increase, but a significant increase in the tax base and the value of that property. And so that's, you know, calculating the difference between those two numbers and then projecting that forward over twenty-five years and the tax rates that are applicable to that property. That's how we calculated that budget, potentially one point two million dollars of TIP revenue that could be utilized to assist this project, as well as, and I should also add, I've planned to do so with the EDA, it should als, could also be utilized, a portion of that could be utilized for other housing needs within the city of Morris as well. So there are some allowances for the ability to pool money from one TIP district and spend it for qualifying projects elsewhere in the city.
Thank you. Yes. Any other questions for, for Nick? Thanks for the education and the information, Nick. Okay, now we open it up for.
Could we ask a question of Nick? That would be probably more appropriate for him to answer.
Probably during the public hearing would be the, portion would be appropriate. Do we open the public hearing now?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think you should open it up.
Okay. Okay, I will open the public hearing to address the proposed TIP district. If you would like to speak to that, please approach the microphone so that we have it on record. State your name and your address and your purpose for, for speaking. Anyone may go first? Now would be the time to do it.
Don't be shy.
Hello, my name is Vance Felixon, I'm a resident of Morris. And a couple questions, one probably for Nick is to build on is Brian had said about the school district and the county and the city, the three entities. Correct me if I'm wrong, but defer to me is not an accurate depiction of a loss because granted, you're putting that money somewhere else, but every, all these other entities are losing that money for their budgets.
Yes, go ahead, Nick, sure.
So I think, you know, we can probably agree or disagree, but the whole way TIP works is you have to actually set your budgets on an annual basis, each of the city, the county, the school district. They levy that budget against the existing tax base that's in place. So really, there's no lost revenue per se. Their revenue's gonna be identical based on the needs of their budget. It's really the taxpayers that are potentially benefiting from the new development, coming onboard and extending that pool, building that tax base larger. And right now, what's happening is for purposes of that levy, the new development will be deferring that benefit for a period of time until the conditions are satisfied with the new TIP district and the financing that they're allocating. So there's, I understand what you're saying, there's no actual lost revenue. It's created, there's still gonna be separate budgets based on the needs and what they have. It's the existing taxpayer that taxes could have been lower, if you will, if there had been a way to finance this project without any assistance. But as I, as I mentioned, the whole precondition that this is based on is that that project will not happen without some form of assistance, whether it's a grant, the TIP dollars that we utilize in the TIP, or some other public source.
But if, if, if an entity had built goals, the four that are built are going to bring you money.
And those are not gonna be captured in the.
Correct, but it's, whichever number of the forty would be built, it's twenty-six years before that goes back onto the docket. Where it's just like the four.
Yeah, you're deferring that benefit.
That's where you say defer, okay.
So the pool, pool expands in twenty-six years, but it doesn't shrink. It stays the same as it is today. And you are, you are deferring, you're not getting the benefit of the new tax base.
If I could add to that really quick, you know, this is a perfect example of the but-for test. He already built four. And he realized that you can't build new like this and ma, make them go. So in order to build anything else, he's gonna need help doing them. We don't lose any taxes, there are no taxes even put into this at all. It's potential future taxes that, that you're gonna be seeing. And I'll give you a really good example, Willie's Super Value. Got TIP to build that project. Well, this is the year that it's paid off, and now next year, everybody's gonna benefit from that project because it's going back on the tax rolls. They paid off their TIP obligation through the taxes that they brought in. Now it's going on the tax rolls, that's gonna be spread amongst everybody that pays taxes. And if it wasn't for TIP, that project wouldn't have been done. He wouldn't, he wouldn't have been able to do that project, that's the same with this. You know, that, these are projects that, they're coming to you because they can't do them without help. And, and if they don't do them, there is no money. There's no taxes.
Okay, and then, but then, Nick, maybe, given that the diversion of the taxes continues until the TIP district expires, as we said, which is in this case twenty-six years, the long-term fiscal impact can be quite significant. And the other thing is, a lot of the TIP money is supposedly requiring projects to meet community needs, such as the creation of quality jobs that provide family-supported wages and benefits to local residents. Are we creating any jobs?
As I, as I had mentioned, I'll answer, I guess, the second part of the question, I'm not sure what the first part was, but the, there are no job requirements to create the TIP district. The actual demonstration is that it provides affordable housing to the community, so that means the qualifying is under the statute. So we can create a housing district, it can be up to twenty-six years, it doesn't have to be. That's whether or not the EDA chooses to allocate the full twenty-six years to the developer. That's something that will come before their consideration. Get your time, but right now, we are, worst-case scenario, if you will, assuming the twenty-six-year life.
Boy, I would anticipate that when you ran the budget to make this work, that it was based on probably twenty-six years.
I'll say that to date, it's not, but that's up to the EDA how they want to utilize it. And as I mentioned, they could utilize it for other housing needs.
It's maybe, it's well, my question, that question was probably not more so for you. It was that the city council needs to weigh that when you're quote-unquote deferring money. What is the benefit back to the community? And in many instances for TIP, they want to do it because it's job creation. And in this instance, I don't see that it's a job creation.
I don't think I've.
He dropped something.
I think, I think.
Man, she dropped something.
I'm not finding that deferral of, of taxes is correct. If there's no project, there's no taxes. So there's nothing to differ. So without a project, there is no generation of taxes, there's nothing to defer. You do the project, that's, I think that's the key, the words are the but-for. You know, whether or not you can, you're not, there is no taxes to defer. The, the school district and the city and the county aren't losing any.
Go ahead.
If it doesn't go through, there is none. Now, I think the question was asked earlier about what was the value of the property? And I think that maybe you, you stated what was the value of the current housing there. What is just the tax value of the property undeveloped? Are we, you know, so you're only, you know, if you don't develop it, all you're gonna do. do is generate taxes off the property that's not developed, is that the correct place?
Yeah, it's just land taxes.
Just the land taxes.
About ninety-seven thousand dollars.
For value, well, and there's a house there right now, that's probably most of that value, but land itself is not taxed very high.
The house is about sixteen thousand of that.
Yeah, value.
Uh, just one quick note, when you're talking about jobs, I don't know if there's any job requirements in TIF, there's job requirements in tax abatement. So when the, the car lot project was done, there was a requirement to create jobs. There's typically job requirements in use of like Department of Employment Economic Development funds for industrial development and stuff, they're all based upon job creation, if you're gonna be doing those, but in this case, it's housing creation, that's, that's what the benefit is to the city, is housing's developed.
And, and that's, don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm not saying I'm against TIF, I think there's definitely positive situations where it works. I just want to make sure that we're, when, that's a pretty big myth of one-point-two-million dollars over a period of time, that we're understanding, which I'm sure you are, what's happening. The other thing is, with, some of this would be subsidized housing, does that weigh in on, we've all, many of us have lived here a long time, and we had a project twenty years ago that was on the west side of town, that wasn't, probably had some issues over a period of time. This is real close to the university from the standpoint of renting, I can understand that, but I know there has been some other communities in our area here that have had some issues with certain things, so it's just something to weigh, I think. As I said, I'm not saying that I'm against the TIF money or this project, it's just things that you, I believe, wanna look at to make sure that you're doing right.
If I'm understanding correctly, just for an example, say it's a twenty-year, we decide on a twenty-year TIF term, Mr. Cameron would pay the taxes upfront, pay the goal, and then we would refund him that amount, for that twenty-year period. Once that twenty-year period gets, then he's on a tax roll, like you kinda used that example for this.
Right, the, the refund would be the increment, that's why it's tax increment financing. The increment from what we're getting now, what, what the four thousand or whatever it was, that, four-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-one is the tax capacity, let's say that's his taxes for this year, next year, you're under, if it's under TIF, the...
It could change.
No, that's gonna stay the same, and anything above that, because of the development, would go back to him as part of TIF. Now, is that correct?
Let's say that, that is how the mechanism works, but it doesn't, it goes to you all, it goes to the EDA.
Right.
The EDA administers that, you know, under terms of an agreement, so whether or not it's a hundred percent of that amount that goes to the developer to help provide the financing, fifty percent of the amount, it's, it's really at the discretion of the EDA in negotiation with the developer to really find what that proper dollar amount is to make the project go.
Okay.
So that's where the administration part comes in, the second part of this two-part.
Right, and that will, that will come before you in the form of a contract, your TIF attorney will review that, prepare that, and come back before the EDA at a future meeting, not here tonight, but at a future meeting to administer or, you know, limit what you will, to provide only the increment that's necessary to actually make the project work, and whether that's twenty years, it's really at the discretion of the EDA.
Great. Thank you, Nick.
One last question.
Okay, we'll hold you to that.
All right, with housing, have we done a study that says we do need forty additional housing units? I'm not certain, there is a big apartment, but right behind it, and I'm not certain if they're fifty, a hundred percent filled or whatnot. They are tax-paying people who have been paying tax for a long time, so it's gonna come into play a little bit.
Well, I, I think I can address that after the public hearing's done, if you want me to do that, or I can do it now, if you want, it's up to you.
Yeah, either way.
Housing was a need that was identified a long time ago. We had no market-rate housing, and we, as a city council, and, and in the groups that we met with, with the university, with even, even other organizations, there, there was no market-rate housing. So the easiest thing I can tell you is, the sixty-one, sixty-two unit apartment building is pretty much full, and they wanna add to it. So that speaks to what the market needed, they knew it, they looked at it, and when, one of the things I like to say is, a vacancy is not as vacancy is not a vacancy, because you need all kinds of housing. You need, you need upper-level housing, you need lower-level housing, you need rental houses, you need apartment buildings, you need one-bedroom apartments, you need two-bedroom apartments, you need three-bedroom apartments. At the time, the, the sixty-two unit apartment complex was built, there were no places for families to come into, to rent out, that they were, that was acceptable to them, you know, and that's what we were hearing. There was no places for other people, you know, whether they're educators, or administrators, or people, so we had people that we knew were living in other cities and driving here, and that's one of the things that we know and understand too. Morris is a destination point for labor, for workers. We have more workers coming into Morris to work than we actually have people in Morris living. We have jobs here, so you need places for those people to live, and in some cases, they're not gonna rent out, maybe a, a, a older rental house that maybe college students were living in. Maybe, maybe they wanna three-bedroom apartment for a family instead of trying to find an old house or whatever. So, housing was always identified as a need, hotel space was identified as a need, and luckily, we had a company in town that built a brand-new hotel, 'cause they couldn't fill their need, you know, so that's what we look at when we look at this, and the other thing I would tell you is that, when, when you do studies of what vacancies are, I don't know that it really addresses truly what the needs are. If you do a low-income vacancy study, you might have Kiro show up as a huge negative in that study. Now, I lived in Kiro when I, I was first married in nineteen-eighty, that place's been around for a long time, actually, it's Nature's Edge now, and that serves a purpose, but you need new development from time to time. I mean, the housing stock will get older and older and older and older if you don't have new housing stock. There is nobody coming to Morris to develop, except two groups, one sitting here tonight. Otherwise, there's cities out in western Minnesota that nobody will go to, to develop in, and I've had city administrators come up to me and ask me, how in the world are you guys getting hotels and apartment buildings and stuff built in Morris? 'Cause we can't get them where we need them, Benson's a good example of that, they can't get built what they need. So that's where this comes into play. So, are there vacancies out there? Sure, there's vacancies in houses, probably in apartment buildings, but, you know, what kind of housing stock do we have, and what kind of housing stock are we gonna have moving forward? He invested thirteen grand of his own money just to put this together, that's how interested he is in Morris and developing here. We didn't pay anything for the whole process, it's very expensive setting up TIF, the legal requirements to put together a developer agreement, and one of the things I'll just share with you now, if you think there's gonna be a second meeting where magically something's gonna change from what he's looking for, it's probably not gonna happen. He's telling you exactly what he needs to be able to build what he wants to build in Morris, and one of the things I shared with you before was the fact that he took three parcels of land and put them together and fixed the legal descriptions on them and everything, to put them into play as a place that could be developed, he did that on his own. But going back to what I said, you know, this is a perfect example of butt-four, he tried it with four-plex, realized how expensive it is to build today, and now he needs help to continue building. If he, if we don't give him help to continue build, building, he'll walk away from this, and he'll be done with it, and then we'll be sitting here. So, so that's kinda my take on the vacancy issue.
Yeah, thank you for answering my question.
Great. Okay, anyone else? Dan?
I'm Dan Johnson with Johnson Property Management, I do live in Benson on the weekends, but I'm here Monday through Friday. You had talked about vacancies, we have seventy units with eight vacancies in one building and two in another building. We are pretty committed to Morris, we're continually upgrading and, and getting our, our properties to be quality units. He talked about it was gonna be affordable housing, but yet it was gonna be market-rate. I'm just wondering where he's getting figures or what kind of rents he's looking at to fit that qualification, since it's not considered blighted area, and it's not considered an area to be redeveloped.
The state Minnesota housing does set the income thresholds every year, and the income thresholds are published and updated in April. The housing units that he needs to build that are assisted with TIF need to demonstrate that at least, it's two-part test, at least twenty percent of the units are available for occupancy for individuals or families at or below fifty percent of the area of median income. Or forty percent of the units set aside for occupancy by individuals or families at sixty percent of the area of median income. That will be an ongoing requirement, it is a requirement within the development agreements that the city has negotiated with other properties for the use of TIF, and, and the new developer will have to abide by that. There are no rental restrictions defined or set by Minnesota housing or TIF assistance.
Okay, thank you, Nick.
Thanks.
Mayor Council members, you'll go back to the butt-four, and I think you've heard it from several people, so I'll just echo it myself, so you're hearing directly from me that if there's a financial need for it, or in fact, I would abandon the project and walk away with, with the declining interest rates that are out there, trade wars and things that are gonna give up the cost of building materials, and that is continuing to rise, and they're, they're going up pretty quickly, so again, I think you've heard it from several people on butt-four, but I think it is important that you're actually hearing directly from me, that I would abandon the project and, and move on.
Thank you, please state your name, John.
Hi, John Timmerman, eight-nineteen Lake Street in Osakers.
Thank you.
I'm Melanie Cole, with State Community Authority, and I, I just wanna make sure that there's a good understanding of what's required as far as affordable housing, so I just wanna make sure I'm understanding right. So, if twenty percent of those forty-four units have to be affordable housing, that's nine of the forty-four, so, I, when we talk about it's gonna be affordable housing, that's nine of the units, correct?
Right, it's a percentage.
Right, okay. And then, I, I just, because we do the rental licensing, and I hear from a lot of people, I think it might be important for you to, to know that, you know, the declining population on campus has had the impact. There are a number of vacancies, and in fact, another development that was developed with TIF district money is actually going to Minnesota housing and asking for a waiver from those income limits, because they can't fill those units. So, I don't have any opinion about whether there should be a TIF district and additional housing, I think we've had quite a few units of new housing recently, and I, you know, I'm no expert whether or not there should be more, but I just think it's really important for you to understand completely the situation in the community, and I'm, I'm not sure that you hear about those things, so I just wanted to make those comments.
Can I ask, what, what would be the rent approximately for the twenty percent?
There is no rent.
There is, there is, is there a ballpark? Do you know of a ballpark? When, when it's out there?
No, that's, that's, that's set by, set by the owner. The only thing that's required is that they, the family meet the income limit. So, for instance, if you look at East Point Village, and the one-bedroom rents are nine-hundred and something, if a family has, you know, meets the income guideline of thirty-something thousand dollars, they might be able to find a way to afford that nine-hundred dollars, we would not be allowed to assist them to fill the gap between that thirty percent that people normally say is affordable and the rent that's charged. It's families who actually end up being rent burdened, it's called, because they're paying a rent that really is not affordable to them, according to their income. So that, that's one of the struggles, I think, with a TIF district property, depending on where those rents are set.
Nick, please.
If I'm, I'm, I should've quoted them earlier, but just so you're aware, the income thresholds, so they're set by family size, but if you assume a family of four, that sixty percent area of median income is forty-five thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. You go down to the fifty percent threshold, that's thirty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty, that's their income, annual income. So those units would have to be set aside for occupancy by families that meet that requirement. Minnesota housing does have rent restricted subsidy programs, this, not TIF, but other types of public financing. They do set those levels based on the sixty and fifty percent AMI thresholds, and so if you just use those, those same ones that I just mentioned for a two-bedroom, a sixty percent would be one-thousand-seventeen dollars, that's set for Stevens County, and a fifty percent threshold would be eight-hundred-and-forty-seven for a two-bedroom.
Okay, yes. But don't they have to meet the income threshold to even get that?
So, so the, the, the income threshold is what applies to TIF, but just for coloring the conversation, Minnesota housing does set, for different types of housing programs, rent restriction levels, and so for the sixty percent AMI threshold for a two-bedroom apartment at Stevens County, that rent restriction, which also includes utility allowances, is one-thousand-seventeen dollars for a two-bedroom apartment, and for a fifty percent AMI, it's eight-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars, so just to color the conversation.
Thank you, Nick.
So, I did have one other question, and, and that is kind of the makeup of what those other forty-four units are planning. Are they, are, you know, the, the four units that you have are four-bedrooms, kinda intended for college students to share a common space, or, or do you know what the makeup of those other units is?
The, the proposed next unit, John Timmerman, sixteen units, eight two-bedroom, eight one-bedroom, and then the following three buildings will be made up of eight two-bedroom units.
I'll ask one more time, anyone else would like to speak to this? Okay, I will close the hearing and bring it back to the council. We have a proposed resolution, we have a recommendation, we've heard a lot of information tonight. What are your, what are your questions, what are your thinking for the council? The resolutions are, one, to adopt the TIF district, and, and then the EDA will have to act on the same, similar resolution. And, and then the EDA will have to act on the same, similar resolution.
And just so you know, the EDA is the city council.
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same people.
It's the same five people.
I think, I think what I'm hearing too is a concern that the taxes are deferred or that the county and the school board and the city aren't going to receive these taxes. And I think it, to me, it's, I think, the But four test is that if it wasn't for these systems, there would be no taxes. And I also think that I know that maybe the enrollment is going down in the school at the university a little bit. But I think Senator Blaine was correct in saying that we have a lot of jobs in town that people live out of town. Maybe they're going to hike, maybe they live out of town currently and maybe they will. But if they're hiring new people that want to come into town, I really think that we have in the past been very deficient in our housing. We haven't been able to attract those people into Morris and bring, for the amount of jobs we have in this town, we don't have that big of a population. I think we should have a bigger population, obviously. So again, I think that's where I see it as a benefit or somebody that wants to invest in our community. And it wasn't for the help if it would happen to you. So I see it as a positive for, for the city and for the surrounding community.
I actually struggle with this a little bit more and I'm not, I mean, that clarifies it a little bit, but I go back to, I, you know, you appreciate any developer coming into town. And the But four of this was Mr. Timmerman had bought this property and planned on building all of this prior to any TIP and realized that after he got the first one done, it's been really expensive for a number of reasons. So to me, the But four was he had started it already. And I guess to finish it would be the But four, but I, I struggle a little bit with that part of it. Is that it, that it was a piece of property that someone was selling that there wasn't ever any intention of developing it into housing, multiple housing units. It was a single owner that just had that land and was looking to sell it. And I think it's great that a developer was, saw the foresight, saw it was right across from the university to put some places that, that would, that college students might rent, but that's the market. The market dictates what goes in there and that's what the developer takes as a risk. It's, it's his risk in putting a piece of property up, is that, that that's his risk. So I, I don't know. Like I said, I just struggle a little bit with that But four.
Well, I kind of, I kind of concur with Brian in his position also that, you know, we can't look down the road twenty to twenty-five years. I mean, obviously, you know, we're made up of the leaders of this community. And I think all of us and all of the things that we, that we look at doing is we like to take the positive side of things and think that, that be more progressive and that things are going to pick up, you know. Enrollment at the university is going to probably continue to increase. So I guess I always like to look at things in a, in a positive light. And I guess I think, I want to thank you first of all for coming to us and asking for the opportunity because like Blaine alluded to earlier, there's just not a lot of people coming to Morris to develop and invest money in our community. So, you know, I just don't see that it's a real negative thing for us. I don't think only positive things can come out of, out of a development like this, so I guess that's my feeling on it.
I guess one thing that Blaine had is in his memo, and it struck me as appropriate for, for this. He said, "Development sparks development," and I think it does. When, when something new is built in town, it usually sparks something else. Is there tax increased taxes coming from this project for a period of time if we, if we use a TIP? No. Are there increased revenue for the rest of the town that comes from this development? Absolutely. You know, the, the, one would think that our population would, it may not jump exactly the amount of the number of people that move in there, but the population as a, as a rule will hold or get better because of this development. Those people that come to town, they're going to have jobs. Those people that come to town are going to go to Willie's and spend their, spend their money for groceries. They're going to go to the movie theater. They're going to go to the bowling alley. They're going to keep our other business and our other amenities going, and those other businesses and amenities pay taxes. And so they're going to benefit. The whole town as a whole is going to benefit. I, again, I agree with you, Kevin, that there's, I see no negative in doing this. Certainly, the, the But four test to me is it just makes absolute sense. And we heard it from Mr. Timmerman, if this doesn't happen, I'm not going to do it because I can't. So that is exactly the reason for the But four test. If, if he would say, or even think that, hey, you know what, if, if I can't get this, I'm going to look at something else. And maybe he would find something else, but look, you know, if that's the deal that, you know, hey, I'm going to, I'm going to build this no matter what, well, then that does not ma- make the But four test. But I think, I think in this case, I think it's a definite use of TIP, but I, I think it's a good, it's a good deal. Mr. Miller.
There's fixed expenses that you can use the TIP money for. I mean, there's certain things that are outlined, that are approved, that the money can be paid back to use for. A big chunk of the money is interest, so it's, it's up to a twenty-six year. If the, if the funds are paid back, that's approved, it'll end sooner when we determine what, what the timeframe is. And I agree there with Brian in question on what are we getting off the property right now? It's, I would estimate a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars a year in taxes on the land and what the house is worth. You know, that's what we're going to lose potentially if we don't get the taxes for the next twenty or twenty-five years. But we're going to get the increase in housing units, which I think Blaine mentioned to us last year with our housing units in town. A lot of our numbers from the state with money coming out to help us out are based off of our housing numbers in our community, which help us to get funding to do other things. I, I just think what we have to gain and what we have to lose, that we need to go forward with it.
He doesn't actually lose that thousand though, because he's going to continue to pay that throughout this development period, say it's five years.
Right.
So he'll continue to pay that.
Right, exactly. If we get a thousand dollars off that property now, that thousand's going to be coming for the next twenty-six years. It's the increment for the new development that will go into this project.
And the value going forward after that, like.
After that, it's, it all goes, yeah.
I was glad to see sidewalks were added to the, I mean, aside, we talked about sidewalks on that property. I don't know, have you had any more discussion about sidewalks, John? What are you thinking?
We have not had any discussion.
I've always talked about that because I know we, we, we did express that as a concern, what the, what the reason bowling change, all to the armory, that, you know, we're going to have to try to figure out a way for the students to get to that bowling station. So, you know, a sidewalk would be a qualifying expense of TIP. So I guess I would, I would like to see something done along those lines so we take care of our college students that are going to be migrating back and toward that bowling stadium.
Right.
Well, I was going to say too, a lot of times deb's in the back. A lot of times, they don't even get to the principal on the tax increment. A lot of times it's interest only just because of the nature of how much taxes are actually generated once the project's done. We have no investment in this whatsoever, none, none. And there are cities that will maybe sell a, a bond to help finance a tax increment project. I've never been in favor of that. In the thirty years, twenty-nine years I've been doing administration, I've been opposed to any kind of support. There's communities that got, got in trouble in the past where they actually borrowed money and, and, and never got their money back on, on notes and stuff. So it's all paid by the developer. It doesn't go towards the actual construction of the building itself. It goes towards land acquisition, utilities, those things, parking lots, things that go with it, but not necessarily the bricks and mortar. Am I correct in that?
Site prep.
So, so that's, that's what this, that's what this funding is going towards. You can correct me if I'm wrong on that. But typically, there's.
Everything that you mentioned is a qualifying expense. And the, the affordable units themselves actually are also a qualifying expense, but there's more than enough.
Yeah, there's more than enough value in this to, to, to eat up any taxes that are generated on this. And, and like, like I said, you know, and I'll just leave the last thing is, we're not sitting here as a city saying, you know what, what we got here right now is just fine. Let's just stay the way we are and we'll fade off into the sunset as a community. We're looking at ways to improve the city and make the city grow so that the university should be growing. You know, it was actually a surprise to me that the, the number of students going to the university was down because nobody came out and said that, that I know of, and I work with the university all the time. Their goal is not to stay where they're at. Their goal is to get as many students as they can in the college. And at one point, I know they're talking about having two thousand students, twenty-one hundred students at the college. So their goal is to grow. Superior Industries' goal is to grow. We're, we're going to be meeting on Thursday to talk about a, almost nine-hundred-foot extension to the runway out at the airport so that they can land faster planes to come in and do more business out of this community. So there's all kinds of things that are happening. Our building inspector can tell you that working in the city of Morris is actually fun for him because there's always stuff going on. He's always, he's been doing so many permits in the last three, four years that he's paid for himself probably a couple times. We had a hospital that expanded, did a new surgical in. You know, so we have assets here in this town that are going to keep us moving forward into the future. And I think this is part of it. This is what you have to look at. And hopefully, we wind up looking at more stuff. Hopefully, we, we wind up drawing people into this community to fill every single vacancy that we have. You know, that's what our goal is. So we look at all kinds of different pieces of this and, and we'll see what happens. We're, we're doing very well as a community out in western Minnesota because there's a lot of them are starting to fade away. But it's a, it's a real testament to the people that live here and created businesses and decided to make a four-year college and all those kind of things. And, and we definitely know that there's people that do not live in this community that come here every single day to work. You know, if gas goes to four seventy-five a gallon sometime in the future, you're going to start seeing a lot of people thinking about maybe not making that hour, two-hour commute to come to Morris, which people are doing. You know, so those are all things that we kind of look at when we're looking at this kind of stuff. And like I said, you don't have developers knocking on your door very often that want to do things. You know, we're very lucky, I think, with the apartment building out at the university, or by the university because the major developer, the major person with money graduated from the college there. You know, that's one of the reasons why he invested in this community. He went to school here and, and knew what Morris was like. So, you know, my recommendation is you move forward with it. I, but I would tell you that there's probably not going to be a lot of wiggle room in the negotiation of the developer agreement because he's already telling you what he needs to be able to do this project. And the next step is we would work with Mary Apple, and I think you guys have been around, maybe not Kim, but Mary does all of our, she's from the bricks and morgan, does all of our legal work for tax increment financing, did it for the, the elementary school. And just one note on that really quick is, the elementary school was a redevelopment project because we tore down a million-dollar burden to the city with the old elementary school and we made that land available for other development, which was a positive thing for us as a community. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Blaine. Anything else before we address this?
Well, I, I think with that hearing, everybody, you know, I'll move on to the resolution establishing the tax increment financing district number sixteen.
I will second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'd just like to say that I really appreciate everyone coming, no matter how this vote goes. I really appreciate you being here. This is not a vote for or against anybody. This is a vote for the city of Morris to go forward into the future. Any other discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, then we have reading and approval of minutes from nine twenty-five.
I'll move approval of the minutes from September twenty-two.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried. And we have the condensed version of the same minutes.
I'll move approval of the condensed minutes from the nine twenty-five meeting.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried. We have the consent agenda consisting of the audit of city bills, pay estimate number thirteen for Magna Construction for the water treatment facility, September transit report. September was up from last year. And the state gambling report for the Eagles for August. And I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I will second.
Any discussion or any questions on any of those items?
Yeah, just a kind of an ouch. Looks like line item twenty-five, we had to replace the pump at the main lift station, forty-seven thousand bucks.
Yeah, things are getting old.
Ouch. Must be quite a pump, almost fifty grand.
Yeah, well, it's the main one, so.
Better than buckets.
Better than buckets is right.
Any, anything else?
No, I think that's all I have.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried. Orders and resolutions. We have a resolution adopting assessment for current services. Looks like utility bill for refuse.
I will move approval of the resolution adopting for the current services.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote for the resolution, please.
Senator Miller?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Solly?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. We have a resolution appointing judges, and you got a new list at your place tonight. The election judges for the November sixth election.
Nice to see that we got people volunteering. Hard to get judges.
Yeah, it's a good group.
I'll move on that resolution appointing judges for November sixth, eighteen, for the state general election.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Yes, it absolutely is nice to get, to have a good, a good slate of judges.
Well, by the looks of the list, it looks like we have, of course, three bowling stations, and we're going to have Apple support at each one of them, so I think they should go those way.
Yep, yep, I certainly hope so. Any other discussion on the resolution? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Senator Ellison?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Alli?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Yes. We have a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement toward zero-death projects for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen.
And this is essentially just a renewal of the TZD grant that we administered last year. We are a multi-agency TZD grant. It includes the sheriff's office, the police department. I believe the university joined us this year and the grant county sheriff's office. The resolution is needed because we're accepting the responsibility as a fiscal authority. So the city of Morris, through the police department, will submit the reports to the state. They'll send out a check to the city of Morris, and the city of Morris will distribute the funds for that to the other agencies that are participating in the grant.
What do you do with that funding or what do you?
If you ever see the enforcement periods like the clicker ticket or the DW, this is the grant that, that covers the overtime shifts. Each time there's an enforcement period, they designate so much overtime for each agency. Once approved, officers work that. We have to file a report to the state. We have to file a report to the state. Each agency does, then they send out a check to the city quarterly and then the city would, like I say, send the funds to the other agencies based on what they're qualified for, based on what they requested. I don't know if you remember, something like 17,000 or 19,000 dollars for the year for 14 or 15 agencies or something like that. 14, 17. I can't remember the exact dollar amount, but it's to cover overtime shifts for the enforcement periods.
Is there any, have you ever had any education that goes with this or just strictly?
It pays for the actual overtime, but they always provide the promotional materials and some of the things. The officers that do work these overtime shifts have to have certain requirements. Every officer that gets the overtime has to attend standardized field sobriety testing and the updates every five years. They have to do what's called the arrive class. Can't play, it used to be drugs that impair. The other one that is the, there's a seatbelt enforcement and car seat enforcement and it's something that the officers have to do every four to five years online to remain qualified to receive the overtime.
Thanks, Ross, for the explanation. Any other discussion on this? I will move the resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for the toward-zero deaths or TZD project for 2018, 2019.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Senator Waller?
Yes.
Solby?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Keith?
Yes. City managers' report.
Touch on a couple of things here. You got to meet Ben. He's doing a tremendous job and actually jumped right in and very well organized. And I appreciate having him here. He actually got to go with us on a lot of our visits and stuff. And I'll talk about those in just a minute. Civil Service Commission did meet and we're going to open up the sergeant's position in the police department. I could maybe talk a little bit more about that at the work session and kind of where we're going with that. Ross and I sat down and talked about some things with the police department. So I think that's a thing that we need to do right now. The German visit was awesome. They love it here. Merus and actually Professor Better absolutely loves coming to Morris. It's really kind of fun when you get a chance to see people from another country come here and they just like everything about this little community, you know. And I think, was it Merus or one of them said when he saw the two turbines? I think it was Guido said he saw the two turbines and he knew his home, back to Morris. But it's really interesting because you get a good chance to hear somebody talk about some of the things that we're talking about. Actually, Professor Better's going to send at least two students here next year. One will come between the city and the university. Another building services person that's going to be working with actually Ben on some building issues and things like that. And then West Central Research and Outreach wanted somebody that was more of an environmental engineer to work with them out at The Rock. And so he's got somebody in mind that's going to send them here. And they're actually covered by, you know, overseas student funding from the university or the German government and things like that. So we don't pay for them to come here. But it's going to be fun to have another couple Germans visiting us this next year. Other than that, I appreciate everybody, you know, if you get a chance to participate and be part of that, that was kind of fun. That's all I have.
Do they reclaim projects? Are they still working on those?
They should finish it. Hopefully, the rain stops here pretty quick.
Okay.
They'll come back. They got, started doing the second lift out in that area out there. I know on Burt Street, they got some, a second layer started. But they should be able to come in and finish that out. I talked to Jeff Kuhn today, probably sometime next week. And we're just waiting for the rain to stop. When you have the first lift on, then you don't have to worry so much about the ground being wet. If the sun comes out and dries it off a little bit, then they'll be able to come in and put the last lift on.
Sun? Okay.
Sun, if the sun comes up.
Any questions on the city manager report?
No question, just.
Or comments?
We've had a little different time.
Yeah.
It doesn't tie into the year.
Yeah. Yeah, and I wouldn't worry about it, you know. I think there's some really good input during the visit. We'll get a chance to talk a little bit more on another Morris model meeting with the council. But the people that go up there, it looks like there's pretty good cross-section of people that are going to go up there. I saw some of the emails coming through. So like, I think Kurt Wolf and Mick Miller from the ethanol plant and representative from Outer Tail and all different kinds of areas are going to be there. So it's going to be a really good chance to get some good information and try to make some good decisions on maybe where we want to go in the future.
Okay. A new police car.
Yeah, so in the budget, we have a new Ford interceptor police vehicle. And then after the last city council meeting, we got word that Ford plant is retooling the Ford interceptors and chief can talk about it. So then if you wanted one, you needed to speak up or probably, or we might not even get one.
Yeah, the Reader's Digest version is that Ford is ending the Ford interceptor in the 2019 model year as it stands. In 2020, it's going to turn into a hybrid. So mid-September, they decided they were going to put a cutoff date for ordering the 2019 so they could get them built and retool the factory next year. In dealing with value in Ford, they told us that the cutoff date that Ford has announced, had announced, was actually probably not a good date. If we didn't get the order in a week before that, we probably weren't going to get a squad car. So we ordered it a little bit earlier than we normally do this time. We haven't got any news of any rejection yet. I talked to the Halling chief that tried to place his order three days after we did and he got his notice from Ford that he wasn't getting a squad car this year. The last I have heard is that they've announced that the Ford interceptor orders from Ford have exceeded the number that they plan on building this year. So.
What's, I guess, what's the guidance that we use to replace squads? I mean, are we replacing the oldest squad? Or how many miles will we run our vehicles before we decide to replace them? I guess I'm just curious.
As a general rule, yes, we replace our oldest unless there's some other factor. The last time we replaced a squad car, we got rid of a seven-year-old vehicle. Right now, everything that we, the oldest one we have is five years old, but I don't think we've put 20,000 miles on it this year because about every 3,000 or 4,000 miles, it's going into the shop. The last three months, we've blown a power steering pump, radiator go out on it. And we've had to have all the wheel sensors replaced in the ABS system. So it's probably not going to be our highest mileage, but it's definitely going to be our highest maintenance cost vehicle that we're going to replace.
Is that a Ford interceptor?
That is a Chevy Impala.
Oh, it's a car. I was going to say it's a Ford.
So the basic cost is, obviously, 28,000 and then the retrofit, approximately, is that about another 10,000 or?
It's about $10,000 between cages, consoles, and labor costs to move everything across. That cost does include the new light bar system for that one because we need to take the light bar off of that one and put it on another car that the circuit board went on. And it doesn't pay to put an old light bar on a new squad car and put a new light bar on an old squad car. And because of the control heads, that means they won't have to rewire the old squad car. We just move the older light bar and the newer control box into the old squad car that's breaking down. So.
All right, well, it looks like we could just as well invest that money in something new that's supposed to put in something new, money in something old.
But I think this was on our preliminary budget.
I didn't see it.
It was on, what do you call that?
Capital.
Capital.
I was looking for it in here.
Yep. Well, and I can tell you, I've been a city administrator for 29 years. And there's two vehicles that I think you should automatically be looking at doing something with. One's a police vehicle and actually, my policy is we do one every year. I mean, we just do one every year because then you keep your fleet upgraded. The other one is a street sweeper. So my policy in Breckenridge is every five years, we'd buy a new street sweeper. Brad's pretty good at keeping the old street sweeper running. But, you know, those vehicles really take a lot of beating, you know, because they're out there all the time, you know, doing stuff. And the last thing you ever want to have is a police vehicle breakdown when you really, truly need it, like a high-speed chaser, you know, going to, you know, they're like the first responders for medical calls and things like that. And we don't want them sitting in the shop all the time. And in this case, you know, what I'm looking for is just a motion from the council authorizing the order that we put in. We don't know when we're going to get it, if it's going to come in this year or come in at the beginning of next year. But it just seemed like that was a good idea to try to get that order in. And if for some reason we don't want to do it, I'm sure somebody else would take it, like the one you just mentioned.
My take on it is I don't think that we don't need it, but I would like to not do it until after our work session and the final budget review. I think we're kind of, I mean, that's kind of the process that we're always going through and now we're kind of talking to you here and it's like, and, you know, I don't know. It's just, it's nice that we have that work session to talk about these things and if we want to do it or don't want to do it, you know, the preliminary, preliminary, kind of bolt that in. We have your capital, we do look for suggestions and stuff. I know it's probably, we might not get it, but I think just kind of following procedure, I'd like to just follow the procedure and go forward as we go forward.
I hear what you're saying, Brian, and I agree, except all we're doing is ratifying that it's already been done. And that's not going to change at the budget work session. It's already been ordered.
Yeah, but why is it already been ordered? We haven't.
Because of the, because of the timing.
Yeah.
Of the time. So it's a ratification that it was okay to order.
Right, but we didn't authorize the order because it hasn't been done through the budget yet. So we haven't followed that process yet. It didn't even get to the point where it got to us before we ordered it.
Right.
So that's my stand. I just said that's, I'd really like to follow that. I know it's like, hey, I want the last one of them, but, you know, maybe if it was something else and you got a different brand, you might be really happy with that, too. I'm just, I was making my point that we should follow that.
Well, I understand that and I agree. I agree we should follow that. What we're doing here is we're just ratifying that it was done.
But that didn't follow the process.
It didn't follow the process and we're recognizing that.
Yeah, and I think you can, if you don't want it, just let me know and we'll call them up and we'll say we don't want it. If you want to wait, I don't know that that's going to matter, waiting till the budget work. The budget work session is actually in October and the final budget isn't done till December. You know, and, you know, it's just, it's one of those things where I'm smart enough to know that we didn't want to miss the chance to do it. I'm also smart enough to know that I need to come back to you and say, was that okay? If you don't think it's okay, just tell me it's not okay and we'll reverse it back out and do it that way. And that's, I think we can definitely get away with that because Ford's going to find somebody else that wants that vehicle. And I can tell you, priority-wise, it's probably going to be one of my higher priorities on the capital outlay budget, you know, because you can't afford not to have police cars. We didn't order one this year. So now, you know, in my mind, well, we could talk about that at the work session.
Right.
But.
I guess the only considerator, only thought I had along this line, too, was if there are other options, I know you're pretty much set on the Ford interceptors. What's your feeling? Is it, are they, they just seem to fit the best for our needs or are there other options out there, Ross?
Well, the Durango was out there. It's a little bit more expensive. Chevy makes a Tahoe, an SUV. It's a lot more expensive. I guess the equipment that we have when we purchased it, it will fit from the Chevy end to the Ford with the exception that we have to get a different footing for it, which is part of that cost. I have been told, and I can't guarantee this, but I've been told the partitions are more expensive in the Durangos because they need extra pieces where, since Ford is the most popular one, you know, they've developed them based on that. You have to get adapter kits to get them to fit into other vehicles essentially.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, you know, it's a tough thing, you know. And for, you know, on your original budget guidance report that they sent out, we all know that LGE is going to be flat this year. 28, we're going to get the same money that we got in 2018. So it's going to get interesting when we get in, when we start digging into our budget. You know, I'm probably the smartest guy in the world, but, you know, when you got the same amount of money to work with this year versus, now, this year versus last year, you know, we know that our expenses are going to continue to go up. So, you know, it's going to create some challenges, I think, for us going forward. We're just going to have to do some beltings. Is this a particular thing we need to say? I don't know.
Well, I guess certainly that if this is a least-cost alternative to a new vehicle compared to what else is out there, it just makes sense to me that we go ahead and go ahead with this one and hopefully we get it and it's a lesser cost than anything else that's out there. And, you know, we have money in our capital outlay fund that we put in this year and last year. You know, I mean, so that fluctuates, but that's kind of, you know, the money's there. I mean, so it's not going to, we're not going to have to lay off a public works employee because we're getting a police car. At least I don't think I'm speaking out of school. Right. So I just want to make sure that that's a point.
Well, if you're uncomfortable moving the purchase, just leave it the way it is. Then we'll just have the work session and then we'll talk it out and figure out what you want to do going forward into December and then we can do whatever we need to do to take care of it. I don't want to force you into deciding now.
So if we decide, if we don't do anything, then that order gets canceled, is that?
No.
If we don't do anything, it's still sitting out there.
It just sits out there.
And then if that point in time comes, we find out we get it, then we can make that determination?
Yeah, all we would be doing tonight would be to pass a motion ratifying the authorization of an order. I mean, so that would be what that is. I guess I would make a motion that we ratify this authorization for the order for the 2019 Ford interceptor.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? I think we'll have roll call vote on this, please.
Senator Solby?
No.
Waller?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Mayor Keith?
Yes. All right, thank you. We have informational items, Morris Police Department media reports and progress report from the water treatment facility. It's always kind of interesting. I know absolutely nothing about that place, but I'm learning a little more each time, right? Also, I had a letter from Tina Smith. I don't know if that make it wrong to everybody or did that get mixed in with some stuff?
Oh, is that supposed to be passed? I think it might have got mixed in.
Anyway, in a nutshell, I was congratulating the city of Morris for being a Tree City USA for 2017. Yes, 2017. So that determination must have just been made. So congratulations, Morris, and that was from Tina Smith. Remember, our budget work session is October 25th. We do have a work, a council meeting before that, so that should help.
Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday to 25th.
Meeting Tuesday.
We have a meeting on Tuesday, the 23rd. And then the budget work session is the 25th. Same way. Yeah, no. Sorry. Anything else to come before the council? Yeah, no. Sorry. Anything else to come before the council?
Just mention that Transit hosting a community stakeholder meeting. That's in there, I guess.
Oh, yeah, that's October twenty-fourth. That could actually be in next week, or next council packet, too, because it's after the next meeting. October twenty-fourth, the Morris Transit's having a five, stakeholder meeting, community meeting, right here to look at creating their five-year plan.
It's part of that MINDOT contract with the consultants to do the five-year planning.
One o'clock to three o'clock.
Oh.
It's for the Morris Transit. So both these pieces of paper could go in our next packet also, or should, actually. Okay, anything else? Thank you for pointing it out, Jeff. Anything else coming before the council? Meeting adjourned. We have an EDA meeting.
Open our EDA meeting. Call the porter. Do we have a roll call, please?
Senator Wallace?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
President Miller?
Yes. Minutes from our January twenty-thirteen meeting.
I'll move approval of the minutes from the January twenty-third eighteen meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Dealing with the resolution establishing the Tax Increment Financing District Number Sixteen. Blaine, anything to add, or pretty much everything we've discussed earlier?
Pretty much the same.
Earlier. I will move on to resolution establishing Tax Increment Financing District Number Sixteen.
We have a motion. We need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion from anyone? I believe we need a roll call vote on this.
Senator Wallace?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
President Miller?
Yes. Thank you. Any other business to be conducted with the EDA?